They put a new one maybe?
I mean, Katie's always been able to do it, but Devon finally got it down.
For that old.
That's one I don't even think I want to try.
See, uh.
Did you mess up on that? It's a hidden plant into the.
A life bit.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
I think it's life there.
Like, um, we don't need a face plant about it.
No.
Really happy to be able to slay in to have our whole family there. We haven't had our whole family.
My. Your kids, Emily, your kiddos.
Yeah, so everything.
Well, and once you get there, it doesn't really matter. Does it matter when you read for food? It's all good. And if there's something I don't like, and there's like one meal out of a year, who cares? Yes, don't say anything. Yeah, don't eat whatever you want. Yeah. Well, there's always enough food. If you don't like what they made, you can make your own. Okay, so do we have Dawn? So Dawn's the only one missing. All right, we will call to order a study meeting for West Valley City Council. It is July 5th at four thirty PM, and we're in the multipurpose room of City Hall. We have everyone present either virtually or in person, except Councilman Christensen will be excused. And we will now go to our minutes. Were there any corrections, or do we have a motion on the minutes?
I just have a question on the minutes. On the opening section, it says that the council met in electronic study session, and then the last sentence says, the meeting was also held electronically via Zoom. I don't know if that's nitpicky or if it's.
There were people on it, but so do we need to clarify that?
Sure, you can clarify it. You could just make that part of your motion, or whoever might make the motion. Do you want that part cleaned up? No problem.
Yeah, a motion that's just cleaned up.
Yeah, Nicole could clean that up.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. A second. Anyone opposed to the motion to approve with that amendment? Okay, seeing nobody, we will consider them passed. We'll now go to our regular meeting for today. Do we have any additions, or did anybody have any questions on today's meeting? I don't see any hands, and nobody here. Okay, so we'll go ahead with that one tonight. We'll now introduce the first public hearing next week, and it's application ZT four twenty twenty-two. And Mr. Pastrick will take care of that one, and he's on Zoom.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon. So this, this ordinance change that's before the council is actually a, a change that the council requested just a few weeks ago. This is relating to shopping centers. So that, as you recall, the ordinance currently requires that a shopping center be on at least one acre of property. And the council asked that that be amended to be reduced to three quarters of one acre. And so this ordinance change makes that change. So again, the minimum size for a shopping center would go to three quarters of an acre. And as part of this, we're also proposing a couple of other changes that would clarify the definition for a shopping center. So this would, this other first change would be, this is on line six eighty-seven on page twenty-four. And so the, the ordinance change itself ends up being really lengthy, because whenever you change a definition, we have to include all of the definitions in the ordinance. But basically, the ordinance currently says that the, that a shopping center means a group of retail and other commercial establishments, and then it goes on to include other language. And the, the challenge has been is that that, that term group, that was a little bit subjective. And so we're just recommending a change here to say that a shopping center would mean three or more commercial establishments with at least two of those being retail. So that's just, again, being a little bit clear on what we mean by a group as opposed to leaving, leaving that open-ended. And then the other change has to do with, again, going back to that minimum area that, again, as we've talked about, for example, with the mall, that if you have two properties that are adjoining one another, and those properties share access and parking, that, that we would consider those together as far as meeting the minimum area requirements. And so those are just a couple, again, a, a couple of clarifying items that we've included in this ordinance. And that summarizes the, the changes.
Hey, thank you. I'll now turn it to the council for any questions for Mr. Pastrick? Or comments?
Yes, I may, yeah, I have one. Go back to the one you said, group right there, and you, you, you change it to two or more. Can you clear it up? Yeah, two, two or three, right?
Three or more, but two of them have to be retail.
Yeah. So there's a unit? Or building?
It, those would be tenants within a building. So if you have a building that has, it would have at least three tenant spaces in it. And, and you would have at least two of those three that would be retail tenants.
Good. So I have.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Anybody else have any comments? That hand's not a raised hand. It's just a pointer, correct? Okay. All right. Seeing no other questions? Thank you, Mr. Pastrick.
Thank you.
I'll move to ordinances, and it's, uh, we're amending section twenty-three dash six dash one oh four and one oh six, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Morris. And he is remote.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. About ten years ago, the state changed the waiting list or the waiting timeframe before an animal can be adopted out or euthanized or any other action take place on it. And so although we've been complying since day one on the ordinance, legal department thought it was expedient that we bring city code in line with state code.
So this change was made ten years ago, or we set up our ordinance ten years ago?
No, it was changed at the state level. Ten years ago, both the state and the city had three days before an animal was turned over to the city and became city property. They changed it to five year, or five days about ten years ago, and we, as a city, complied with that, but never changed our ordinance to reflect that.
Okay. Thank you. So any questions?
Mayor, I might add, one of the reasons that we found this is we do a rolling, as you'll recall, especially with Title VII, in particular land use codes. We do a rolling review every year to, to make sure we're on point with things. The Animal Services segment is a little less, or a little more obscure than Title VII, a little less often used, and that's how it got missed. So through the normal process of review, our great counsel, Brad Patterson, Brad, it's not Brad Patterson, Jepson.
Yep.
Thanks. Found this, this detail had been skipped and wanted to clarify. So it's a cleanup item. It's been an awfully long time, you're right, but it's a little more obscure than, than normal. And we've been in compliance from a practice perspective. That was my question as well.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a cleanup.
Okay, seeing nothing from anyone online or here in the room, we'll move on to resolution twenty-two dash one twenty. And we'll turn that over to Kobe Wilson, and he is on Zoom as well.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. So this item that we're bringing before you this resolution, this is to help us get started on our reconstruction project of Lancer Way out here on thirty-six fifty South. As I believe most of you know, we received some federal funding, a little over five and a half million dollars of federal funding to do the reconstruction of Lancer Way between twenty-seven hundred West and thirty-two hundred West. As part of that federal funding, obviously, there's a local match that we typically pay, which will be a little over four hundred thousand, a little under five hundred thousand, I think. But this, in addition to the funding, we have to perform the environmental document before we can access those federal funds. So the purpose of this resolution is to approve a contract with Wilson Engineering. And they're actually, they're a large national firm, Wilson and Company Incorporated. They're a large national firm, been doing work for eighty years. So, so no, no relation to me. But yeah, we'd, we'd like to get them on board to get this environmental document started so that we can get it complete, hopefully in about three to four months, and then we'll get going on the design of, of Lancer Way.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the council? So was construction anticipated to start in twenty-four on this?
Yep, we're probably looking at a twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five construction season. Yep.
Okay. All right, seeing no other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we'll turn the next one. We have resolution twenty-two dash one twenty-one. We'll turn the time over to Jamie Young, and she is in person.
Thank you, Mayor. Jamie Young, Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. So today we are seeking approval of acceptance of a grant for just over a hundred and ninety-one thousand for a kind of a ninja type course that we're gonna, the grant that we received from the governor's Office of Economic Development. And we will use that money to put, to put this, this ninja courses. We haven't designed all of the elements yet, but it's an all abilities ninja course with like a forty yard dash with a timing system. And, and so that's what we need from, from council is the acceptance of that grant money to move forward with procurement of the, of the amenities for that. A kind of a neat amenity to add to our city. It's at the property over at Westview Park, near Westview Park, the newly acquired property.
Okay, does everybody know the address of that one? Yes. All right, any questions?
I'd like to see the video.
All right.
The only similarity there is the hair color, I think. Yeah, but at times both the obstacle course as well as the forty yard dash, kind of a fun amenity.
One timer does that, or there's two different?
There are two different timers, one on the, on the course, and they have start, stop buttons. On the race, it beeps three times, and then you go, but it, it times you when you finish, stops when you cross the finish line.
So it automatically does it? You don't have to hit the bottom on the race?
Not on the race, no.
Oh, cool.
On the course you do. You have to start and stop, but on the course it, it times you as the laser finish.
Okay.
And it has two lanes, as you could see, and there has the two lanes that go, so you race someone, but really you're just racing against your own best time.
That's cool.
Yeah, a lot of fun.
Football players often time their forty.
They do.
Yeah.
So then they could do it by themselves, not have to have a timer with them.
And with the laser, it's so much better.
Yeah.
More accurate, yes.
Great.
Is there one like this somewhere in the state or?
Um, I believe it's Washington City that has one. Yep, we have frequented that when we've been down in St. George, and it's a lot of fun. Yep, I believe they're the only ones in the state that have it.
Awesome.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And now we'll go to our stormwater utility, and Mr. Johnson will be doing that remotely as well.
All right, it looks like, Ken, am I gonna be able to advance that?
Or? I have to advance that for you.
Hmm. Let me just share my screen if that's all right. I think it's gonna be a little bit easier. All right. All right, well, um, thank you for the opportunity to, to share with you today. This is equally as exciting as the ninja course. This is your annual update on the stormwater utility. And minimize that. So, um, the city has, we have a, a stormwater utility, as I, I assume you're all aware. It's, it's been in existence for a little over twenty years, and it was funded originally as a funding mechanism to, uh, sorry, to, uh, pay for the operate, to fund operational costs that, for what were at the time new federal stormwater regulations. And then additionally to fund stormwater capital improvement projects. And currently our fee is six dollars per month. And that's six dollars per month for, for a single-family home or duplex. And then we, we also build commercial properties based on the impervious, the amount of impervious surface area that they have on their property. And so one equivalent residential unit is thirty-one hundred sixty-three square feet of impervious surface area. And so commercial properties are built, one ERUs, or six dollars for every three hundred and sixty-three square feet of impervious surface on their property. Um, so the, the regulations that, that kind of govern this world are the, the Clean Water Act, the Federal Clean Water Act requires what they call MS fours, which we are. We are a municipal separate storm sewer system. And so MS fours are required to permit for, for stormwater discharge. And so the state of Utah issues a Utah pollution discharge elimination system, or UPDS permit to us for, uh, just which really requires us to do certain things to improve and to promote water quality. So currently, we're, we're kind of right in the middle of our permit cycle. It began in, in twenty twenty and will expire in twenty twenty-five. And with each permit, the city is required to put together a new stormwater management plan to address the requirements of the permit. And the most recent plan was adopted in twenty twenty by the city council. And so this permit is enforced by the Utah DEQ, and we, you know, they carry a big stick of fines for noncompliance. We've never received any fines, but that's always over our head. So the permit requires us to put together a plan to address six minimum control measures. And just really, some of this might be review for each of you, so I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on, on what is the, kind of the, what are the basic elements of our stormwater management plan? And feel free to stop me if you have any questions. So the first two minimum control measures are public education and outreach, and public involvement and participation. And this is really, the, 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 the point of this part of the permit is that we, we do things to educate the public on what they can do to improve water quality. A lot of this work happens through the Stormwater Coalition, the Salt Lake County Stormwater Coalition, that we, we participate in and, and pay a, a portion of their operating cost. You'll, you'll note there, you, I'm sure you would have seen some of their ad campaigns or their buses or whatever. They, they do a pretty robust media campaign to get the stormwater message out there kind of broadly. And we also do various in-person events, whether it's working with the schools at the Water Quality Fair. Hillary Venable gets involved in quite a bit of these other things, the Spring Vet, Spring Fest participation, and whatever. We, we do quite a bit to interact with the public in, in different opportunities. And another part of this is we also have to make our plan available to the public during the development stage, and then in, as we execute the plan as well. And the plan is available on our website for, for the public, if any of you care to peruse it. Uh, the next minimum control measure is we have to put together a plan to implement and enforce an illicit discharge detection and elimination program. So illicit discharge is kind of what the EPA refers to as any non-stormwater discharge. It's, it's just any kind of pollutant they refer to as an illicit discharge. And so we have a, a pretty robust system of, or program of, of either inspection or enforcement, depending on, on what we encounter. And just for your information, year-to-date, we've had thirty-one violations, seven from dumping contaminants. Most of those are actually, uh, like concrete getting discharged into a storm drain or something like that. A lot of dust and, or mud tracking from various constructions, and then sixteen, what we, SWPPP, we call that SWIP, that's Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan Maintenance. So this is generally construction-related. So just so you're aware that this goes on. Uh, minimum control measure number four is construction site runoff control. So it, it, this is really an effort that we have to, that we put together to minimize any pollutants that may, may be introduced to the storm drain system from construction activity. And we do monthly inspections of construction sites and work with these folks to educate them on, on the requirements. But then we will also cite them for noncompliance as well. And then minimum control measure, measure number five is, is post-construction, or kind of what we do with developed property after it's been built on and developed. And, and we issue a stormwater management permit to new and redevelopment projects, and they're, you know, during the planning stages, they're required to install what BMPs, Best Management Practices to, whether, you know, which could be onsite retention ponds or, or various things to improve water quality during the design phase. And so we inspect them when they're being built, and then we inspect them annually, actually every two years, to ensure that these, the, the, the things that they put into place to minimize pollution off of their sites are, are working and being maintained properly. And then the sixth minimum control measure is pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So this really has to do with how we do our business, whether it be municipal maintenance, street maintenance, storm drain maintenance, or it could be parks maintenance, golf courses, and things like that. And so there's quite a bit of, of effort that goes into making sure that we have a, a plan, or following a plan to, to minimize pollutants that could be, you know, especially in kind of our hi, our high priority, high priority areas, like the Public Works Maintenance Facility, where we, we bring pollutants from all over the city and put them there. And, and so we make sure that, that, you know, that water doesn't get discharged to the storm drain that we, that all, you know, so that we're not having an adverse impact to the environment under the water from our own municipal operation. So that's kind of a rundown on the, the six minimum control measures in our, our stormwater management plan. Very fascinating, I know. So just a little bit of context. So last year, this time last year, the city council enacted a, a new, or increased the, the stormwater fees. It went from four dollars to six dollars. And so it had been four dollars for roughly most of the life of this, of this stormwater utility. It had been a four-dollar fee. And, and so this past fiscal year was the first full year of, of this utility fee increase, and we went from roughly three point nine million dollars in, in revenue to five point five, um, which is a pretty healthy, good jump. And then just kind of a comparison of expenses year after year. And so anyways, that's just a snap. Obviously, we had with the additional funds last year, we were able to increase the output and, and still we're, we're working towards full implementation of getting worked out. So kind of a, a snapshot of, of our budget distribution for the upcoming fiscal year. So roughly, you know, one and a half million dollars kind of covers our in-house labor, whether it be engineers doing design work, or or operators in, in the operations division doing maintenance on the storm drain system. That's where a bulk of that gets paid for. Uh, one point nine million in the budget is, is capital projects. And, uh, yeah, definitely, there's, we'll get into this a little bit later, but there's no shortage of need. And then about a half million dollars in um, capital equipment and, uh, anyways, various other expenditures. Just a snapshot of our fund balance. We, we have a healthy fund balance that kind of fluctuates up and down through the years, depending on kind of the cycle of our capital improvement projects. And so we're in great shape that way. And then just, we'll, we'll run through a few projects that we've completed this year, kind of the, the past, present, and future of our, of our stormwater CIP program. So Stanton Drive was completed this past year. Nice little, great little project to kind of minimize some, we, we had a lot of backyard drainage systems that weren't great, and, and had some street flooding that we were able to eliminate with this little project. And the next one comes to Drive Storm Drain, kind of a similar situation, just some poor drainage in some areas, and it's a little project that was able to help us to fix some very localized problems. But the Mountain View Corridor Drainage Betterment. So this is a, we, we worked with UDOT during the construction of Mountain View Corridor to kind of share some, some drainage facilities. They were, they needed to build drainage facilities for their highway, and, and we still had some unfinished work in this area that that we were able to work with them and pay them roughly an additional four hundred thousand dollars to convey that water through the, along the Mountain View Corridor system. And so that was a, a good, good opportunity, and we saved a lot of money by working together with the state, and we're grateful for their participation. So things that we've got going on right now, so with the thirty-one hundred South bike lanes and overlay that we've talked about quite a bit, you're very well aware of it. A, a pretty substantial piece of this is, is stormwater work. Before we do any, any asphalt overlays, we liked, I guess we've learned from sad experience that we've, we've gone out on, on road construction projects that we haven't fully vetted the storm drain, and, and we get out there with, with a paver, and, and the storm drain starts collapsing. And so we do quite an extensive investigation on the condition of our storm drain system before a, a project, and before we pave a road with brand-new asphalt. And so we're replacing quite a bit of corrugated metal pipe, which is kind of the bane of our existence to some extent in the stormwater world, because it's corrosive, and it, and it's, it has a, in, in most circumstances, if it's been installed, it's exceeded its useful life in our city. And, and we haven't installed it in the last twenty-five, probably thirty years. But there's a lot of it out there. So we'll talk a little bit more, more about that in the future. But just be aware that as part of our thirty-one hundred South project, we are, we're doing a lot of storm drain work to, uh, you know, to, to protect, to protect the storm drainage system, but also protect the asphalt that is gonna be on top of it. So the twenty-seven hundred West Brighton Canal Bridge, this is something we worked with Ranger Hunter. As you know, the Brighton Canal has gone out of service, and this little bridge on Twenty-seventh West, kind of on the north end of the city, is, uh, the, the bridge is unused, and so it ends up, we need the bridges removed. And we worked with Ranger Hunter to get that removed as part of a project that they have nearby. But there was also some parallel drainage facilities near that bridge that we were able to get removed with this as well. So and then this is a, just a list of some upcoming things, many of these projects we've talked about. I'll just leave this up here for just a second. If any of you have any questions about any particular project, I'm happy to address them. But we have our hands full on, there's no shortage of, of work for sure. And then kind of another list of, of future needs that are currently just unscheduled. And there's, again, like I said, quite a bit of work in, and we're working as hard as we can to get things out the door and get them ready for construction. The last one you'll notice is just the continued replacement of that corrugated metal pipe. We rough, you know, we have eighty-five-ish thousand feet of corrugated metal pipe in the city, and we hope to catch it before it collapses. We've definitely, we've brought projects to the council where we are dealing with an emergency project to replace a neighborhood's corrugated metal pipe that failed. But, so we're working pretty proactively to try to figure out what that, how to replace that, where the bad pieces are before they fail. So that really is, that's a, a broad overview of the stormwater utility, and it's a, it's an excellent tool for us to be able to handle drainage problems from a capital improvement standpoint. But also, it gives us the resources necessary to comply with the federal regulations that, that do exist and, and we need to comply with. So if there are any questions, I will gladly take them, and if there are not, I will conclude.
Okay, any questions?
Just one question, Dan. On the slide eight, and this might be putting you on the spot, so no worries if you, if you don't have an answer. I'm assuming that's standard operating procedures. Do you have, uh, on that third bullet, an example of what that would be?
So which, which one is slide eight? I'm sorry, I don't.
MCM, Pollution Prevention and Good Housekeeping.
Number six? Okay, so what was the question?
Third bullet point.
SOPs for activities that can impact water quality. Yeah, so we are required by the permit to develop standard operating procedures for almost everything that we do that can impact water quality. And so we have SO standard operating procedures for our slurry fill operations. For our slurry fill operations or for the street sweeping and how we deal with the, the wastewater from the storm drain cleaning activities. And. And so we, we have a SharePoint site that we keep those on and, and then. Actively train new employees on those SOPs. I don't know if that answered your question or not.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions? My only question, so on those corrugated pipe, the metal pipes that are collapsing, are any of those. Able to be lined and get further use out of them or are they all past saving?
No, that's a, that's a great question. We, we have lined them before and, and if the pipe. It has really, you know, if the, if the, that corridor, that pipe corridor has good structure. And has not collapsed yet. If the pipe has collapsed, we're kind of just, there is no o- option other than remove and replace. But if it has good structure to it, then yeah, lining is an option and we've done it before. And it's priced pretty competitively with, I get, when I say competitively, it almost ends up being a wash. From a price standpoint, whether you remove and replace versus lining it. The benefit comes to minimizing impact on the public. Ranger Hunter does quite a bit of that on their sewer system, but they don't see the types of collapses and failures that we do with these corrugated metal pipes. But we, we did a pretty substantial project on Fortieth West. Several years ago that. It was a, a lining project and. Quite honestly, if I were choosing from day one, I think I would have removed and replaced that pipe. But that is an option that we always keep. In our pocket and is available for our use if we choose to do that.
Okay, thank you. It's good to know that they're pretty much equal in cost.
Yeah.
So. Okay. I can't tell if there's anybody online with a question. Can you? I'm sure they could take their mic off and yell at me.
The Nicole would be monitoring that.
Okay, so we're good. Okay.
Nobody with their hand up anyway, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll go to the council calendar. Does everybody have a chance to look at that? I did ask Nicole to add the. My hometown schedule on there as well. We went to a recital on Thursday or Friday night. I can't remember which one now. And it was really nice. And so if those are on there, then everybody can go to them. It was really a nice recital. So. Brian was looking as it was when his mom did recitals for piano and he was not going. With enthusiasm, but he left so excited. So it was good. If I, if that kind of tells you how the night went. Okay, nothing there? Do we have any potential future agenda items? Yes.
There's been on social media, a report of a cougar in, in the neighborhood. I don't know if you've seen that.
I did.
I'd love to hear a report on, on what we are doing. With that situation.
So how many disbelief accounts? Cause I saw.
I went for a run this morning and I didn't use my headphones just in case. I'm gonna hear them coming.
Well, I did see one myself about four years ago. On the forty-one hundred pedestrian pass. So I was not surprised, but only because I've seen one with my own eyes in the city. So how, do we have any reports? We did animal control go out or anything?
I don't personally have one.
Okay.
We will find out and I will make sure that council, we could either bring it back as a discussion item or we can email you the details either way.
Which would you prefer?
It'd be nice if there was a, a report online that said, you know. The mountain lion situation has been digging.
Sure, okay, great. It looks like Lane's on to you and maybe he does have some information. I'm sorry.
Yep.
We've had a couple of reports and officers have been out, seen nothing. So we're, we're keeping an eye out for it. We do have some equipment that could, that could help us, but we would, we would always defer to Forest Service or. The state people that, that are experts in the field.
Okay.
And Lane, do you know if they've been made aware of that?
They have. They've gotten, they've gotten the calls too. So it's a, it's kind of, everybody's. Got their, looking over their shoulder. But no one's got a, no one's provided a picture or. Or even a, a real solid location for us yet.
So everybody needs to get out their hunting cams and.
I've seen on, online on Nextdoor. Ring video.
Oh, that's the cougar?
Yeah, so I don't know if those are real or, or not, but, but they show locations and. So. They might check that out to. To pin it down.
Well, we'll look for that. We, we have, we have gear that can be used. On a mountain lion, nets, you know, a projectile net to, to catch him. We also have tranquilizers. We know the calculations there, but it would be our preference that we get the, the Forest Service folks in to handle that.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Right, council reports. The parade went well yesterday, Fourth of July in Magna. Actually, we got some really good cheers. So a lot of west side people out there and. Former and future, so it was really good. Well received.
I heard, I heard we were the first in line entry, first or second.
We were like the third. We had the grand marshal and then somebody else other than us. Yeah, their mayor wasn't very happy that we went before him. That was kind of a repercussion to. The organizers, isers later, but we didn't have a say on that, so.
Yeah, that was probably great.
Yeah. But he's nice. It'll be fine. Yeah. So, and then we're gonna participate in the July twenty-fourth parade as well. So if you want to come walk with that one as well and hand out candy. We definitely need more candy though. We were out of candy before we even made the turn for Main Street. So. But it was still fun. All right. Seeing nothing else? Do we, oh, yes.
In the Heights.
Oh, how was it? Is it appropriate for all ages? Okay, from what about till?
Probably thirteen.
Thirteen and older? Okay. Okay. That's good to know that it's good though. Right, seeing nothing else? Do we have a need for a closed session? Okay, just one action left. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.